This regular meeting of the Board of Education for September 26, 2017 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Director Comstam is absent this evening, as is interim Superintendent Awad. We do have Director Anthony, who is traveling on Board business, but he is calling in, is present with us by phone this evening. As a reminder, we have our PPS Ombudsman Judy Martin attending all of our regular Board meetings. Specifically Judy will be here to listen to public comments and if appropriate, provide additional support to families who need it. She'll be available at the back of the room after public testimony if you would like to share more regarding any concerns. She can also be reached at (503) 916-3045, or at ombudsman@pps.net. And Judy, she's up there in the corner, so if anybody needs anything in addition, she's our ombudsman. We also have interpreters with us this evening, and I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language they'll be interpreting, and inform the audience where they'll be located in the auditorium should someone need their assistance. Welcome.
Buenas tardes, me llamo Lucia Caprejos, solo interpreta en español, y yo voy a estar allá al fondo si me necesitan. Gracias.
Saludos, mi nombre es Tatiana, si vais a buscar un traductor, voy a estar ahí sentada. Gracias y nos vemos.
Hola, soy el traductor chino, soy Gao, voy a hablar en español. Hola, si vais a necesitar un mensaje de Vietnam, por favor, vayan a la parte trasera del Consejo. Gracias.
Thank you. So, we wanted to start off this evening with a couple things that I've noted that happened over the last week. And I'm gonna first ask, we're gonna start with the Reconnection Center program, and I'm gonna ask Director Bailey, who participated in some of their, in Project Reconnect, to kick off this agenda item.
I was checking my calendar to remember which day it was. Saturday, September 16th. Number of PPS staff and community volunteers came out on Saturday to try to reconnect with students who we expected to come to school, but we hadn't found in the first 10 days. Oftentimes, that's because there's some situation where they're not feeling welcome at the school they're currently assigned to. And so, we tried to reconnect with them to help them find some other pathway in to finish their education at Portland Public Schools. So, I'd like to have Karina Wolf and come on up and tell us more.
I think there's also a video as well.
We were gonna start with Karina and then go to the video.
Hi, good evening, Director Broom Edwards and fellow directors. My name is Karina Wolf, and I'm the Senior Director of Multiple Pathways to Graduation. And I'm excited to share some about the Reconnect to Your Future campaign. This is their seventh year of the campaign. I also want to acknowledge Director Moore, thank you also for knocking on doors, I appreciate that. So, this is our seventh year of the Reconnect to Your Future campaign. We engage more than 1,000, last year it was 1,079 students. And we touch and come in contact with more than 2,000 in any given year. And I'm gonna turn it over to Matt Adi, who's the Administrator for Reconnection Services, to share just a little bit about this year's event.
Good evening. So, Reconnection Services helps students who've disconnected from their education get back in school and get back on track to graduate. As Karina noted, sort of last year, and consistent with the last three years, we had over 1,000 students referred to us because they disengaged, or are on the process of disengaging from their education. And to date, we've been able to help almost 600 of those students re-enroll in a comprehensive or alternative school or program. But we also know that not every student who disconnects ends up being referred to us. And so, with that in mind, our annual outreach campaign is one part of a large effort to connect with those students, especially those students who aren't on our radar, because they haven't been referred to our program. So, with that in mind, we targeted 565 students to go and knock on their doors on September 16th, based on data that we received in an early LEVER report. And then, on the 16th, over 40 volunteers from across PPS and the Portland community spent a Saturday morning knocking on strangers' doors. We were able to reach, we were able to go to 302 of these doors, we spoke with 126 families, and we left 132 door hangers on the doors of families who weren't home on a Saturday morning, they were probably at soccer. Now, when we knocked on the doors, we asked, "Has your student been able to find their way back to school? And if not, how can we help?" Some of the families told us that their students had re-enrolled, either to a private school, or they left the district, or they'd gone out of state. And so, this is really important information for us, and we're using it to update the data that we received in the early LEVER report. But, families who did ask for help, they're currently working with our outreach coordinators. And more specifically, right now, we're in the process of following up with 241 families who indicated that they needed some help, or who weren't home, or we were unable to reach, because we didn't have enough volunteers to reach all 565 of those doors. So, it's too early to say how many of those young people will be able to get back into school. But I can say that this will be the first, in many efforts on the part of our program, to reach out to these students and families. Let them know that we notice you're not in school, we care, and we want to help you get back. Over the last three years, we've been able to successfully re-engage. Between 70 and 80 percent of the students referred to us, and we're hopeful that these 241 families will be able to get all 100 percent of them back into school. So, with that in mind, I believe Director Bailey, we have a, we have a video.
Portland Public Schools staff and volunteers went door to door this morning with the goal of encouraging students who have disconnected from school to come back to class. More than 50 people fanned out across Portland to do this, and they looked for students who left comprehensive, alternative, charter, or community-based schools, and have not been seen in school since this year started. They invite students to go back to school, and they give them resources.
Our success rate ranges between 80, 65 and 80 percent of the students that we connect with, reconnect back to school.
Really, a lot of smiling faces we've seen. And even if it turns out their child has already connected somewhere else, and that's why they're not in our numbers, it's like, wow, great, somebody's looking after kids.
Each year, the district's Reconnection and Outreach Services works with more than 1,000 students who leave school without graduating.
And I just want to say thanks again to Director Moore and Director Bailey for joining us.
I want to say thanks to both of you for doing great work, and to all the volunteers who turned out on Saturday. We got, we got some great exercise, besides doing some wonderful things, so.
Director Sparza Brown?
I want to thank you also for your work. That's personally very important to me. I happen to be out of town the last two years, I'm so sorry. But my question too, do you have volunteers in multiple languages? And if you're gonna do it again, let me know, and I'd love to.
We have volunteers. Thank you, we appreciate that. And we do it every year, and we have volunteers in multiple languages, and all of our information is in multiple languages. And all of our information is in language specific to the student. So, it's all coded, and we have multiple.
Great, thank you again for that important work.
Thank you for not only that one Saturday, but the work all year round. No, it makes a big difference.
Thanks.
Thank you. So, just in the other things that have been happening with the startup school, we had a very important visitor to Portland Public Schools last week. At Fabian, the school district hosted the governor for the bill signing of four bills, and I'm going to, we're gonna...
Three bills.
Three bills. You're the expert, you were there. We're gonna have a video from that, but also, then I'm gonna ask Director Sparza Brown, who was the Board representative at that event, to share briefly a little bit more about the bills that were signed, and the governor's visit.
Have you guys ever seen a bill signing before?
No!
We'll make sure we'll leave a pen for the school.
It is incredibly inspiring to be with our governor, who is very child and education-focused and equity-focused. And the fact that these bills are all about really improving the outcomes for kids through teacher quality, through having all of our students reflected in our curriculum, through ensuring that English language learners will have teachers with the right skills and knowledge to help them meet, to progress in language and literacy and meet their full potential. So, the energy in the room, you know, was amazing, and to be in the space that is really unique in the nation, that combines a graduate school of education and a K-8 school, is amazing. And the fact also, that was exciting to see children watching from the stories above us, to hear about how we are taking care of them in, in Oregon. We're taking care of our kids.
As we work to increase support for educator development and improve student learning, we must be laser-focused on equity. I like to say that equity isn't the icing on the cake, it needs to be the flour in the cake. It needs to be a very important part of the infrastructure. And every child must know that regardless of where they come from, the language they speak, the color of their skin, or how they identify as a person, they are valued.
I think that pretty much says it. It was a very inspiring visit to Fabian, which if you haven't been there, I invite you all to visit. It's an amazing place that co-locates College of Education in a K-8 setting. And the governor got to see the programs that are for children from six months old. It really is, is cradle to career, as they say, three to PhD. She got to see a native Montessori classroom and interact with the kids, it was pretty incredible. The bills that she signed, as stated in the video, have to do with improving the services for English learners, for resources, for helping to fund teachers to receive their National Board certification, because we know that teacher quality counts. And having those resources will help many of our teachers be able to pursue that advanced development. And the last was for ethnic studies, that was really spearheaded by Aponos students locally. So, we're really proud of, of those three bills, and we had a wonderful day with the governor. Thanks.
Thank you for representing us at that. And the last piece of exciting news we had this past week is that PPS's very own Matthew Bacon-Brennis was chosen as Oregon Teacher of the Year. Mr. Bacon-Brennis teaches Japanese immersion at Mount Tabor Middle School. Is he here? Would you like to come up? First of all, we want to congratulate you, it's quite an honor and recognition. Maybe you could come up and just share a couple thoughts?
Sure.
What's your secret sauce?
My secret sauce?
Because it must be because you're a middle school teacher.
You know, I, I'm not talking to you, I guess. I have sat here for the last 15 minutes, and I think I heard all about the secret sauce. I am so absolutely proud to be a part of the recon, well, I'm not part of that, and I know I'm not out in the streets reconnecting students to the schools, but I'm so proud to be a part of a school district that embraces everybody, that, that captures that idea that Governor Kate Brown puts out there, that equity is, it needs to be the flour in the cake. And I, I'm not only proud to be a part of that, I'm extremely grateful to this district. I began working with Courageous Conversations and the work around racial equity many years ago, and it really dynamically transformed what I do. I went from the icing, I think, I'm still working on it, but towards putting that as in the, as the filling, as, as the flower, as the, the whole package. I'm also super proud, as a language person, to witness at the opening of this thing, that we have five different languages that this has translated into. And as somebody who has endured not understanding in multiple countries for long, many years, and tried to participate in meetings where I didn't understand, I, I'm delighted. So, I say this, and I say this because I'm very excited to represent this district, represent Mount Tabor, represent the amazing staff I work with. I, my, when I was at the Assembly last week, it was kind of a Portland Timbers, Diego, Valery speech, you know, it's like, there's no way I stand up here alone. Nobody does good stuff alone. And I think we just witnessed that in the first 15 minutes here, and spreading that message. So, thank you very much for having me here this evening, and I'll do what I can.
Congratulations, we're, we're very proud of you, and we know you'll do an outstanding job representing not only Portland Public Schools, but our state.
Thank you, Gillian.
Thank you.
Before we move on to agenda, I wanted to take a moment to ask Jerry Vincent to come forward to talk about a campaign that we're, we have underway. It's Project Giving Hope. It's running from September 25th through the 30th.
Following the devastating tropical storms in Houston and Miami, Portland Public Schools is helping lead a community-wide effort to help students, families, and educators in those areas. I want to thank Andre Jackson, who was the PPS Partnership Coordinator for organizing and coordinating it. And then, I'm gonna ask Jerry Vincent to come forward and just talk a little briefly about how either individuals or businesses can engage. Is he? Can we come back to him? Sure, we can come back to him. So, we'll come back to him. So, next, we're going to have public comment. I'd like to review our guidelines for public comment. The Board wants to thank the community for taking the time to come attend the meeting and share your viewpoints and perspectives with the Board. But before you do that, we found Jerry Vincent. So, why don't you give us, I gave you a great lead-in. We thank Andre for all the work he's done, and why don't you tell us briefly about Project Giving Hope, and how people can, other people can help our fellow school districts in, and students and families in Houston and Miami and Puerto Rico.
Sure. So, obviously, we learned about the devastation through Council of Great City Schools, in terms of, not about it, but about the outreach that occurred. Portland Public Schools is a member of that organization. We were tracking what other districts have been able to provide. We sat down and had a thought about what can we do here as Portlanders. We looked at all the different, one of the large things was footwear and socks. We already had a couple districts who really attacked the backpack-type thing and school supplies. And we said, "We're here in Portland, there's 70 different footwear companies around here, so we think that we can help out in this way." So, Andre did what he does, he has all those connections with the Starbucks locations, with the, with the print media and, and television. And so, we've set up drop boxes here, they're just out here all day long, and then at Starbucks, we're gonna have at least two rounds of collecting things, bringing them back to the warehouse here. And then, next step is how to get them in some type of vehicle, and you know, 18-wheeler, whatever it is, depending on what we get, and get them down to both places. We might even be able to drop ship, or whatever. So, very positive receive, we have a lot of the, the unions are on board, and PAT wants to be part of, a lot of folks want to be part of this. You know, we always think about what we don't have, or like, we could, we could use a little bit more, right? But when you have something like this hit at this magnitude, these are folks that have nothing, absolutely nothing. And so, we have people just personally giving other time and effort and doing their part. And they're, they're very excited to do so, and we're excited to accept that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
So, not only at Starbucks, but in the lobby here, you could also go to the Project Giving Hope webpage on the PPS website is another way. Thanks to the Partnership Office and the COO's office for that. So, back to public comment. So, we want to thank the community for coming and sharing your perspective this evening. We value public input as it informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a Board is to actively listen with our devices, electronic devices turned off. Board members do not respond to comments or questions during the public comment, but our Board Manager, Roseanne Powell, will follow up on the issues raised during public testimony, or Judy Martin, the Ombudsman. So, guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration for others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed at the Superintendent's Office as a personnel matter. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, a red light will go on, and the buzzer will sound. And at that point, we'll respectfully ask you to conclude your comments, or say your last sentence. We appreciate everybody's input, and I'm now gonna ask Ms. Hewson for, to call people who have signed up for public comment.
Our first two speakers are Gillian Murr and Amy Zajac.
I'm Gillian Murr, M-U-R-R. I have given you my speech and copies of things that I'm submitting to Franklin tomorrow at my meeting. Although I'm a teacher in the district, I'm coming to you tonight as a concerned parent. While I know you've all, most of you have heard my cries about the inequalities and seclusion happening at Franklin in the sped classrooms, I feel it's important for me to make public comment. The PPS Special Education Mission Statement is as follows. As a department, we are committed to reversing the trend of isolation and segregation of students with disabilities by ensuring all students have access to high-quality instruction responsive to their needs and delivered by effective and culturally responsive educators within the least restrictive environment. While everyone's talking about the modernized Franklin, going down to the sped classrooms feels like you're going back in time. I think most of you have been there and seen for yourself. The location does nothing at all to reverse the trend of isolation and segregation. As a parent, how can I believe the mission statement? You just built a brand-new school that has isolated and secluded sped classrooms. I would take the old school over this one any day for my son. I have four years' worth of students at Franklin who know my son, yet they don't see him in the halls this year. Last week, a group of freshman students came to visit me, and one of, none of, only one of them had seen my son. None of them know where his classroom is this year. They did last year. The mission statement also ensures all students have access to high-quality instruction responsive to their needs. Yet you have 28 students of varying academic levels and needs in two classrooms that are approximately 1,500 square feet. The district's own specs say it should be 1,200 square feet per 12 students. Teachers must physically move furniture when my son, in his wheelchair, enters the classroom. How are these students with extremely high needs and complicated IEPs able to access high-quality instruction when they can barely move in the classroom? Many students in my son's class are learning very basic life-skilled needs, yet the district has given them no room to do so. These classrooms cannot deliver responsive instruction to the students. They deserve the same level of robust support for success now enjoyed by the Jeddah population at Franklin. Most concerning is the location of the classrooms in regard to the safety. The area doesn't have two quick emergency rooms out that don't involve stairs. The mobility needs of the upcoming cohorts will grow, and to assume otherwise shows haphazard planning and is just plain dangerous. I feel my concerns have been dismissed or minimized. Most concerning was being told that students would be shuffled to evenly distribute them in the two small classrooms, regardless of whether they fit their needs. Mission statements are just words. What are we teaching by segregating and isolating sped students? While this is a good lesson for the planning of future school modernization, what about the Franklin students now? I understand and agree that making radical changes this year would be hard and ultimately not benefit the students, but what will be done now so that these students can enjoy an amazing year like other Quakers?
Can you, can you wrap up? Yes, thanks.
And then, you need a plan for the future to meet the goals of the mission statement, the safety of the students, and show the community the district is committed to what they say. My son and his peers deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, and appreciate the material you've provided us, and we'll ask one of our committees to look at it with, that works on facilities.
Amy Zajac, Z-A-J-A-C. I consider my child a success story. He is doing remarkably better than he was a year ago. Through constant advocating, working with outside support, and along with my school team, we have set up a system so that he can successfully access his education. My child is impacted by an invisible disability. His brain processes information differently. Things such as making eye contact, playing with other children, understanding social inferences, and non-verbal cues are hard for him. My child is in a least restrictive environment with additional support from a paraeducator. My child also has an outside ABA therapist come into the classroom. ABA is behavioral therapy. It is more specialized than the PBIS systems currently in place at many PPS schools. ABA therapy is considered medical and behavioral treatment. The goal of ABA therapy is to generalize skills across all environments, including school. The Special Education Department is rolling out a new district policy that directly affects my child and also other children impacted by autism. I have provided copies of the old and new policy to Board members, along with a list of parent concerns from multiple families. Per Mr. Williams, this policy was written by Mr. Cantwell and Mr. Baker. Mr. Williams gave the reasons for implementing the policy. Unfortunately, Mr. Williams was not familiar with my son, his situation, my school team, or how well the old policy had worked at Woodmere. My principal is supportive of my advocating for my son. I asked my principal if she was comfortable with my asking for a waiver from Mr. Cantwell, and she was. I have reached out to Mr. Cantwell, and I have also reached out to the ombudsman. There are many issues with this policy, but the one I want to highlight is the one that is my biggest concern. The policy is asking for the ABA therapist to observe and collect data only, and not interact with my child at all. This is not ABA therapy, this is a consult. As I understand it, the district has autism consultants and no ABA therapists. Kindergarten started off at Lent without any of the supports or accommodations in his IEP being utilized by staff. Staff at his old school told me they had no idea how to work with him or to get him to do anything. He regressed, and we were considering repeating kindergarten, or even pulling him out for the remainder of the year. Through petition, we transferred to a more stable, inclusive school. His ABA therapist was able to come in, work with the team, model to the para, and set up a very specific behavior plan. Some staff have suggested that ABA should not happen at school, only after school. If school ends at 3:00 and you add in the drive time of one and a half hours, along with the two-hour session, my child does not get home until 6:30. This leaves very little time for playing, relaxing, or even homework. I like being involved with my school, but I arrive late to PTO meetings because I'm picking up my child from an ABA session. The Board wants to be optimistic about moving forward with change and new leadership. I share your optimism, and I commend the Board with the direction they are moving in right now. I'm respectfully asking for the School Board members to review this policy. There is a history with other families behind this policy and how it evolved. Therefore, I strongly believe that this policy needs to be examined in great detail. in great detail while taking into account parent input, along with the input of other staff. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And thank you for providing the information. We'll follow up with Judy Martin.
Our next two speakers are Gina Lund and Joshua DeCristo.
Hi. My name is Gina Lundee, L-U-N-D-E, and I'm also speaking about the new ABA policy. So my son is four. He is an amazing little boy who is also autistic, and the way that he functions in the world is greatly influenced by his autism. And my son isn't even severely impacted, but even still before he started ABA therapy, which is the evidence-based treatment for autism, he had some troubling behaviors like bashing his head into the floor when he was frustrated, or not being able to speak other than repeating your words back. He couldn't make his own sentences. And after only eight months of ABA therapy, in conjunction with being in a mainstream preschool, he is now interacting in many ways at or almost at the level of his peers, and he is a happy and adorable child. And this year, his therapists are working with him in his classroom, and he is thriving. He receives about 15 hours per week of therapy right now through our insurance, and it seems like a lot, but it's play-based. He loves it, and it's working really well. So PPS, as you know, has just made a policy change that they are no longer going to allow ABA therapists in the classroom to support children in school. They will allow them to enter the classroom for two hours a week to observe and collect data only. No interaction. My son is going to be in kindergarten in two years, and he and many other children are going to be directly and irreversibly impacted by this policy. And I'm asking you that you ask PPS to make a policy that addresses their concerns without removing access to care. And I'm going to give you a heads up because if you speak to the special ed department, you will most likely be told what I was told, which is that if you don't know about autism therapy, it might actually sound like a convincing argument, but that we have autism specialists on staff and that they're highly trained. But they're consulting with the IEP team about once per month and not working directly with the children. So if your child is struggling with reading or something, how effective would it be for a reading specialist to observe them and consult with the teacher once per month and never actually read with your child? That's the difference. And it's a truly ridiculous argument to say that that is an acceptable alternative. We also participate in therapy outside the classroom, but one of the traits of autism is not being able to generalize across different contexts. So because appropriate social behavior is an unavoidable part of school and learning, the support often does need to take place, at least partially in the classroom, for the child to learn and to be successful in therapy. So there are many ways that we've thought of to address their concerns other than a blanket ban on therapy, which I think is cruel, arbitrary, and completely unnecessary. It targets a population that already has so many challenges and a lot to contribute to our schools and to their community. And it also hurts your teachers, which benefit from having this assistance in the classroom and training. So I'm asking that you stand with us and get this, help us get this policy changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Joshua DeCristo, D-E-C-R-I-S-T-O. I'd like to speak to you tonight about an issue facing those of us who live in northeast Portland, specifically the boundary changes that have been proposed for King School, Saban School, and Almeda School. It's always humbling to come to a situation like this and hear everybody's experiences. And so I'm hopeful that the board will pay attention to this issue and not necessarily try to categorize the importance of these numerous issues that the board is dealing with, but will take a few minutes to consider this issue on its merits. Specifically, what my concern is, is number one, the data that has been provided to the board by PPS regarding enrollment at King is extremely inconsistent. In the board's materials that were provided by PPS, the enrollment figures for K-5 students at King is indicated at 299. That's inconsistent with all of the other data points, including specifically the data prepared by PSU's Population Research Center, which is what my understanding is PPS is supposed to rely on. And I encourage the board to look at that data because it's much more than is indicated in the proposal. The proposal's also inconsistent with other data points relied on by PPS at various times over the last year. And before even considering any boundary changes, it seems like the board should be well-aware of what the data is actually saying. Even more importantly, I think, the data points indicate that under the proposed boundary change, both Saban and King would actually have lower increases in enrollment. That seems very inconsistent with the objective. And I think that without accurate data, the board should not move forward with any proposed boundary changes between King and, excuse me, between King and Saban. In fact, the data show, from PSU at least, that both Saban and King will have in excess of the minimum 360 students for a vibrant K-5 program within five years. Moreover, there's no indication anywhere in the proposal as to the effect of this proposed boundary change on Title I funds at King. The proposal indicates that it would drop the free lunch eligibility percentage of the population in the King catchment area to something pretty close to 40%. And having already identified numerous inconsistencies in the data, I think that that should be of concern, and the board should consider what effect that would have. I have many more data points like this that I think the board should consider. Without any accurate information, you really should not move forward on that proposed boundary change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lastly, we have Colin Nederkorn and Zalika Gardner.
Colin Nederkorn, N-E-D-E-R-K-O-O-R-N. So thank you to the board for your service. I wanted to provide some comments on the Tubman and Roseway Heights feeder pattern proposal. My family's not in the school system yet. We have a six-month-old. And the reason I'm here speaking to you rather than at home is I'm pretty concerned about the process that's being used to implement these pretty significant changes that will change the way school works for, you know, a large swath of the population in northeast Portland, including my son. I am really grateful that one of our neighbors put a leaflet in my mailbox and let me know about it. You know, I wonder if all of the families that are affected by this know that this is actually happening, whether they're in, you know, not in school yet or currently in school. The plan and the timeline for the plan has many red flags for me. It's really concerning as a parent that PPS would pursue this so aggressively without properly notifying the public and allowing time for thoughtful public discussion and comment, without considering the views of DEBRAC. I, you know, looked, when I learned about this, I kind of looked back in time, and I saw DEBRAC had a draft of boundary changes that they, in their June 1, 2017 meeting, that are pretty different from the PPS boundary changes. And I watched the board meeting from August 15, where the boundary changes weren't presented, but the board asked, hey, was DEBRAC consulted on this? And the answer was no. And, you know, it seems like there's not, there's not a lot of time for you, the board, to consider this, this pretty significant change thoughtfully either. And lastly, and importantly, we have an incoming school superintendent who starts in October, right around the time that this change is supposed to be voted on. And they'll, you know, they'll, they'll be responsible for implementing it, and it'll be their legacy, even though they're effectively not involved in this decision. And in the time that I spent to understand this proposal, it seemed like there's even some collateral damage that wasn't, wasn't considered, like, you know, what, whether it's Kairos or Access, or the fact that lots of parents are pitted against each other now talking about these changes. I think that, you know, what I would encourage is that PPS slow down so that we can allow adequate time to make a good decision and really unbundle whatever decisions need to be made that are driving this aggressive timeline, and that we engage stakeholders in, in the proposed solution, not just, you know, hey, here it is, we're going to vote on it. And that we consider all of the impacts of the decision and ensure that the change actually improves the education experience for all the affected students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Completed our public, public comment period. There are other points in time in the board meeting when we have votes that there'll be, if you've signed up for public comment on those, those points, we'll call on people. But for now, we're going to move to Board Resolution 5514. The Board of Education recognizes that dyslexia has significant educational implications that need to be addressed, and we're designating October, this resolution would designate October 2017 as Dyslexia Awareness Month. About a month and a half ago, we had some individuals, some parents in the community come and ask us to do this. So we're moving ahead tonight. I'm going to ask Director Asparza Brown to introduce this resolution.
Well, I'm happy to introduce the resolution tonight to give a little background on the importance of our teachers becoming knowledgeable and supporting students with dyslexia. It's important to know that it's a widespread issue. One in five students struggle with reading. This highlights the importance of our teachers being knowledgeable about how to serve these students, since every teacher in our district is likely to be responsible for teaching children who experience reading challenges or dyslexia. Dyslexia is a neurobiologically based learning disability that is characterized by difficulties with accurate and/or fluent reading, word recognition, and poor spelling and decoding abilities. Recently, Oregon passed SB 1003 requiring school districts to ensure that at least one teacher in each K-5 school have received training in identifying dyslexia in students beginning fall 2018. So this legislation also requires higher education to incorporate dyslexia standards in all licensure programs. So as a district, therefore, we have both a legal and a moral imperative to serve all of our students effectively. Highlighting dyslexia through this resolution will allow us to do this more effectively and raise awareness for supporting all students to become successful readers. Thank you.
Thank you. The board will now consider Resolution Number 5514, a resolution to designate October 2017 as Dyslexia Awareness Month. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Director Asparza Brown moves, and Director Bailey seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5514. Ms. Hewson, is there any public comment on Resolution 5514?
Yes, we have two. Meg Hagan and Lisa Lyon.
Well, good evening, members of the board. My name is Lisa Lyon, L-Y-O-N. On behalf of Decoding Dyslexia Oregon, I want to thank Director Constam for recommending that the board vote on a resolution tonight to recognize Dyslexia Awareness Month at Portland Public Schools. Before I begin, I'd like to ask permission to recognize those who are here to support the passage of this resolution. Is that okay?
Can y'all stand up?
Yay, Jared. Yay. Great. Awesome. Thank you. Recognizing October as Dyslexia Awareness Month would be a great first step for families who have been trying for decades to get appropriate evidence-based instruction for their family members. We have heard stories from multiple families who have shared their disbelief that their grandchildren are still unable to receive appropriate intervention for their dyslexia, much like their parents and grandparents before them. They remarked that they would never have believed that they would still be fighting for their grandchildren's right to be taught to read so many decades later. Oftentimes, dyslexia is a generational struggle because of the impact of family genetics. We believe the tide has begun to turn, and dyslexia advocates no longer need to convince you that dyslexia is real or that dyslexia is a meaningful, descriptive, and useful term that should be freely used in schools and at IEP meetings. Now that there is agreement and recognition about using the word dyslexia after it has long been shunned, it is time for the real work to begin. There are still too many teachers, through no fault of their own, who have never been educated about dyslexia or the foundational building blocks of literacy. To unpack the daily reality that most children with dyslexia have not been identified nor are receiving evidence-based instruction at PPS school, teachers will need training and sustained mentorship. Senate Bill 1003 requires that one teacher from each K-5 building attend an ODE-approved training on dyslexia. Although the completion of this training is not required until July of 2018, more than 95 educators from various districts have already completed this 30-hour professional development. I was delighted to recently learn that PPS has recently made arrangements to have their educators trained in April. Let's see. Many PPS parents and educators are eager to be informed of these details. We are encouraged that school-based communities are beginning to form around dyslexia. Parents are hosting meetings and are connecting and educating other parents about how to navigate this journey called dyslexia. Schools are providing space for meetings to be held, allowing bulletin boards and libraries to host displays, and dyslexia resources are listed on their websites. Awareness is growing, and slowly, the shame that has accompanied dyslexia for so long is being brought into the light. Lastly, I invite you to increase your personal knowledge of dyslexia by attending a session in November, the 11th, at the OSBA conference titled "Things I Wish My School Board Members Know." Thank you for your time and your willingness to support this resolution to clearing October Dyslexia Awareness Month.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Meg Hagan, H-A-G-A-N. Good evening, members of the board. On behalf of more than 7,000 PPS students who have dyslexia, I'd like to thank you for voting on the resolution to recognize October as Dyslexia Awareness Month at Portland Public Schools. Along with this vote, I challenge you to take action during your terms towards helping our entire school population to learn to read at grade level. If a student does not read at grade level by third grade, they have a 1 in 7 chance of ever becoming a grade level reader and have a 4x higher chance of dropping out of school, or a 13x higher chance if they are economically disadvantaged. 85% of all incarcerated juvenile offenders are functionally illiterate. Take a moment to think about how your life would have turned out if you had not been able to read fast and accurately. How would you have felt as a student sitting next to peers who took notes with ease as you struggled to get one word on the page in the time that other students wrote 10? What if you were never able to finish an exam in the same amount of time that it took your classmates, or if you struggled to spell the words you spent hours studying, only to be told that you need to try harder next time? It's an arduous journey through school when one has dyslexia, and awareness is needed. How do we help the kids who are at most risk for reading failure, whether it be from dyslexia, from poverty, or from ELL? Research shows us the answer is providing a systematic, explicit program of instruction that includes the five components of reading to all children, and training our teachers on structured literacy. A year ago last spring, this board approved a new K-5 literacy adoption, one that took six components from five companies and combined them into a unique reading program, reading and writing program of its own. While seemingly progressive, it's also cavalier. The effectiveness of the suite of materials is unproven and requires greater skill and judgment by teachers to pick the right lessons and the smartest sequence for skill building. Are we leaving it to chance that our student population will learn to read? Data is important. It can guide decision-making. Have you been provided with data from the schools that have been using the new curricula? I implore you to contact the Office of Teaching and Learning to ask for the data. Did SBACK, EZCBM, and DIBL scores improve in the schools that are using the adoption? Is Project REED being used with Fidelity as a Tier 2 intervention in every one of those schools? Please publicize this data on the PPS website and allow education reports. reporters access to this data. It's imperative that this board follow up on the literacy rollout and confirm the data. The rollout began as 43% of Portland's 3rd graders, including 70% of blacks and Latinos, fell short of the Sback reading standards. The repercussions of not reading at grade level are too devastating to leave it to chance. Thank you so much for considering our proposal and the resolution.
Thank you both, and thank you everybody for coming. Is there any board discussion on this resolution? Director Asparza Brown?
Pardon?
Yeah, you can comment on the resolution or...
Comment on the...
You can comment on, you can comment on whatever you'd like to comment on.
Okay, so my comment.
This is our discussion.
So, that is a topic for teaching and learning. I have been trying to collect the data for, like, mid-year and spring data from last year and then the year before, so kind of a pre and post for the new pilot, as well as Sback data. We are still collecting that and gathering that, as well as an outside evaluation that we are still waiting for. So the data is ready, and I think that's on the teaching and learning agenda. Remember, next month or the following month, watch for that, to which we will carefully look at the data, look across schools, look across student groups, and learn, you know, lessons learned and what we need to do to tighten it, and in particular, to make sure that we are addressing the five components of reading. It is somewhat of a chance-taking to bundle disparate programs together, certainly, so we will, we are monitoring and working to monitor that most closely. So, our goal is for everybody to be a reader, and to have all teachers learn to teach all students. Thanks.
So watch for the teaching and learning agenda.
Should be posted on the website. Anybody else want to comment on the resolution? So, the board will now vote on Resolution 5514. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 5514 is approved by a vote of 6 to 0 with Student Representative Tran voting.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, board members, and thank you to everybody who came tonight to share your perspective and advocating. On behalf of, we really are glad to see you here.
Thank you so much.
So, in July, there was a board work session discussion about the sequencing of the modernizations for the 2017 Health and Safety Bond projects. And then in addition, on September 12th, there was a presentation and discussion by the Finance Audit and Operations Committee of the Board. And tonight, the board is recommending a resolution relating to the timing of the projects, not just the modernization, but also the very important health and safety components of the bonds. I'd like to ask the Chair of the Finance Audit and Operations Committee, Director Moore, to introduce this item.
As Director Brim Edwards noted, the Finance Audit and Operations Committee considered this resolution that lays out the sequence of the bond work going forward, in addition to ongoing health and safety and accessibility work, which will account for at least $150 million of the 2017 bond. This resolution proposes that the sequencing of schools being either completely built or rebuilt and modernized would be as follows: Kellogg Middle School, Madison High School, Lincoln High School, and Benson Polytechnic High School. And the target date for students to occupy the new Kellogg Middle School is August 2021. Completion of a modernized Madison High School is anticipated to be August 2022. Target date for students to occupy a new Lincoln High School is August 2023. And the target date for students to occupy Phase 1 of a modernized Benson is August 2022. And there will be additional phases of the Benson High School modernization project beyond that. The committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of the resolution.
So, just a point of clarification, that while there's very clear sequencing for the modernizations, it's full steam ahead with the health and safety components of the bond, and that's, it's, the assumption is that's going to, starting from the summer's work, continue on till it's done, but it, so it's not like it's sequenced in with the other modernizations, it is sequential.
Well, it's, in many cases, it's concurrent.
I'm sorry, yes, that's what I meant.
Okay. So, the, the health, safety, and accessibility improvements have already started. They'll continue throughout the school year. Whenever possible, the, the health, safety, and accessibility will be bundled, for these four schools, the work will be bundled together so that they can happen at the same time. But throughout the district, the health, safety, and accessibility work is going to be rolling out in phases.
We're going to have an update on that shortly, in two agenda items, but it's ongoing.
Okay, there you go.
So I just want to make sure that it's not after.
It's ongoing. No, it has already started.
Do I have a motion for this resolution?
So moved.
Second? Anybody?
Second.
So, Director Bailey moves, and Director Asparza Brown seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5515. Ms. Hewson, is there any public comment on this resolution?
No.
No public comment. Is there any board discussion on this resolution?
Just do it.
The board will now vote on Resolution 5515. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Representative Tran?
Yes.
So, Resolution 5515 is approved by a vote of 6 to 0 with Student Representative Tran voting yes. So the resolution is adopted. Next, we're going to have the first reading of our public records policy. When the new board was installed in July, we made it a priority to, there had been a significant amount of work already done on the revised public records policy. We made it a priority to continue to move it along. We want to thank the Communications Office for all the work they've done to, on this policy, and support the board's work. We, actually, last board meeting had brought the current version of the first reading of the board, the public records policy, at that meeting, but we had had some fairly significant input from essentially two sources. One, some, some community members who had significant experience with our public records policy, and also some significant input from the Society of Professional Journalists. And we incorporated all of the input and had a good discussion at the, both the board level, but also at the task force level as well. And because there had been significant changes, we didn't want to have the first reading without people having an opportunity to look at the new changes. So tonight's really the official first reading, although this, this version is the same version that was discussed at the last board meeting. We just wanted to let people to have time to absorb all the changes we made. There was a question at the last task force meeting about one additional change, and that was that if there had been a request for public record and it had been supplied, but that the redaction was so significant to make the record production useless, we had a discussion about whether that was something that they could appeal to the, to the superintendent and board and eventually to the DA, or go straight to the DA. And after consultation with, and we, so we considered whether we should add a provision that would allow for the appeal of a redaction, but we haven't made that change, and we didn't make a change because there's already a mechanism by which individuals can appeal redactions. So it would just be stating law, the law in our policy, which isn't necessary. So, we did not add that, but people should, individuals should know that there's appeal process if you don't, if the district rejects a public records request, but also if it's so significantly redacted that there is appeal process for that as well. So really, we have the same policy that we had several weeks ago, and this is just the official first reading. A version of the draft policy is posted on the PPS website under Board Policy and then Draft Policies. The public comment period is 21 days, with the last day to comment being October 17, 2017. Contact information for public comment will be posted with the policy, and the board will hold a second reading of the policy on October 24, 2017. At that time, if we have public comment, either from the community or the bargaining units, we will consider that, and we either potentially could amend the policy, or if there's not significant public comment, that the policy, that would lend to changes in the policy, then we would have a second reading and approve the policy. Is there any questions or comments from board members?
No, just thankful that we're doing this work.
Director Moore?
In between sneezes. I want to thank the staff. The staff work on this was great. It was, it was fast, it was responsive, it was hugely collaborative. I mean, this was great. Thank you.
Great. So that's the first reading, and it will be back to us on October 24. Next, I'd want to ask Director Bailey, who's the Chair of the Enrollment and Transfer Committee, to introduce the next agenda item, which is...
I'm feeling fine, thanks. That's it.
Ah, how'd I just miss that? Sorry. Okay, sorry. We're actually going to go to the next facility issue, and then we'll get to middle school planning. So, in May of 2017, Portland voters provided strong support for the PPS school bond that was designed to address both urgent and long-term needs of our district facilities, so our students have safer, healthier, and modernized facilities. And one of the things the board has done, just because this is something that is a very high priority for the district, and we know for parents in the school district as well, that we have a board committee to provide sort of oversight, and our Chair of that committee is Director Rosen. So, Director Rosen, give us an update.
So, the Health and Safety and Accessibility Committee is getting underway with the meeting tomorrow morning, and the focus is keeping the promise of the May 2017 bond to clearly articulate by December 2017 a short and long-term strategy to all currently identified health and safety and accessibility issues. The oversight and public transparency will be shared with the community under the umbrella of, again, keeping the promise. The committee will meet on a quarterly basis and work closely with the superintendent and district staff to share the work already underway in our buildings. We have at least $150 million to spend, as specified by Board Resolution 5394, which states that the board has a clear plan on how at least $150 million of additional health and safety investments will be spent to first address all high-risk areas as a priority for lead, paint, lead-in-water fixtures and pipes, radon, exposed asbestos, and a minimum level of acceptable fire protection, with the rest of the remaining dollars to address other health, safety, and accessibility issues. The board should consider increasing the amount of additional health and safety investment in this bond to ensure issues of lead, radon, exposed asbestos, and high-risk facility issues are fully resolved. So, the work's beginning with our first board meeting tomorrow, and I just wanted to introduce Jerry Vincent, our Chief Operating Officer, who is really in charge of the work, and he'll be working with us hand in hand. So, thank you.
Jerry Vincent.
He doesn't have anything to say. He doesn't have a presentation.
Good evening. I thought he just wanted to say thank you.
I did want to.
Thank you.
You know, thank you. One thing we had discussed is having a sort of transparent plan that parents in the community can see when their schools are going to be up. I know in late August, the first of many fixtures was replaced, and I'm wondering if you could just share, give an overview of the schedule, at least for the lead-in-the-water fixture replacements, and then how it is that parents, and I know this will be in concert with Director Rosen's committees, but how it is that parents will know sort of when their school is scheduled, on what timeline.
Be glad to. So, first of all, we're referring this process as the water quality, because the focus on the lead, we're also testing for copper and other things as well, with the same testing, because that would come up second and third and fourth. Hey, you got the lead out, but what'd you do about the copper? What'd you do about? So, it's our water quality is what we're calling this effort right now in the improvement. So, we're excited. We have everything going at one time. All the plates are spinning. So, while we're hiring up on the people, we have the first bid of 15 schools that's out. Schools 16 through 90, we've prioritized. We've taken it through two departments for some vetting, and we have one more I need to meet with tomorrow morning. We met with equity, we met with funded programs. I want to get with SPED tomorrow and find out, is there anything we're not seeing and how we're rolling these out? Everything's going to the web. So, what we're going to be doing, and we'll talk about it more in the committee tomorrow, we're bidding them out in 15. That seems to be all the plumbers, contractors that are available can handle at one time. So it'll be six groups of 15. It's a rolling start. Every six to eight weeks, as we start award the bids, we get out on the street, we do job walks in the process, and then we award the bids, they start the projects, and then halfway into the projects, as they're finishing, we start testing. We do the flush protocols and the testing. All of this is going to be in a matrix that will be on the website that we'll update each Friday, so people can see this in process. Group 2 is now out on the street bidding. Group 2 is going to the board for awards, so you can see when it's coming. 90 is a lot of schools, but the rollout in like an eight-week program says that, and if we run, run into no secondary issues where it's partial pipe replacement in the walls or our trenches out to the street, this thing, this all rolls out into next June. This is 90 schools. This is fast overall, but careful and with the process, because everything is involved in the flush protocol to make sure the results come out correctly with the testing. I will say, and so it'll be on the website, Director Brim Edwards, and so they'll be able to see exactly in real time where it's at. It's just like what we did, the same transparency after we did water tests last July and August. Those took a delay to be there because everyone in the city, Parks and Rec City, everyone was testing their water with the same consultant firms. So we were told a two-week turnaround, ended being about 12 weeks, so it got there, but there was a delay. Well, that's not the case now. So we have four firms on board. We'll be able to get those results back and post and roll. It's a rolling start on all the, all the water quality, just like we are with the bond projects that you just talked about. So we have an agenda to go through tomorrow. We've got some exciting things. We have an infographic that tells pictures what we're doing, because there's a whole lot more detail to it. We'll talk about it tomorrow. We have a contractor schedule. At one point, we're meeting with Director Rosen and the group, and it'll come back to the board. The board needs to decide, technically, you'd think you, this would be a no-brainer. We need to technically decide on what a drinking fixture is versus a faucet. And that's important, not only for the drinking fixtures that we swap out and test, but literally, per EPA and healthy schools programs, you have to come back in, in time intervals down the road and keep testing them. So, we're going to roll all those out to you. Like I said, we're in some play, and it starts tomorrow with our, with our committee, and we'll start to get things up on the web. I'm thinking a week or two on the outside. We, we're short people. So it's not, it's not... So it's not, it's not not wanting to, it's just we ought to have all the folks in place. And I will tell you this, we attended a WebEx, our water team, all of us did, last week, and it was New York City talking about how they tackled their water issue and their lead in the water. And luckily, we're on mute, because we, a lot of us, we looked at, a lot of times we're listening to them and up on the screen, and we were either doing everything that they were doing, and they had to do it and learn as they went, or we're ahead of them, and we're doing more involved and a deeper in-depth of what we're doing than what they're doing. And in the end, they said, boy, you know, I really wish we could have done this and this, we'll probably have to go back and do that. And that's already part of what we're doing on the front end. So we've got some great consultants, we have people working, you know, hard on this. And we even have people going out at the sites, you know, one in the morning to check on the work and things like that. So we think we're moving through it quickly, but carefully. And so that's what we would want the board and the community to know.
That's great. Thanks. Thank you so much.
So I just, a fine point on the communication. So it was just a massive undertaking for the Office of School Modernization and Facilities to get the three, either new or remodeled schools opened, you know, on time and on budget. And just now that, now that you've, thank you. And, you know, I think there's a real expectation in the parent community that we be communicating really clearly now what the cycle is. And so if it would be possible, maybe for the committee tomorrow to get a schedule of when things will start getting posted every Friday, because I think that'll be a great tool, and it'll give our community and parents confidence that that very large bonding package they voted for is going to be delivering on the promise.
Well, that's what we want. You know, I mean, these beautiful big structures are important, but this is a safety thing, right? And so it's this, this amount of money, but it's, right now, it's of this much importance in terms of the whole bond, and we want the community to know that. So the communication part is actually taking longer than the construction part right now. The flush protocols, so we do it right, and then communication...
You've got to rebrand that.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah. So it's just, it's how you roll it out, and it's how we, it's how we cover it. So it's important, because you do one little slip-up and your readings are way off, and you go back and you're doing the whole process again. So, yeah.
Thanks, Jerry.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Director Rosen, and we're looking forward to your next, your next report. Now, we're going to go to middle schools. So Director Bailey and Directors Moore and Anthony have been quite busy recently, and we wanted to provide an update, and I think, as we've said before, that middle schools, this is going to be on the board agenda for the next several meetings, so that there's an opportunity for there to be sort of continuous information flow to and from the community. So Director Bailey?
Thank you. So Portland Public Schools is, has been for several years, starting to take on two major structural inequities. One of those are the K8 schools that were implemented about 10 years ago, and almost from the get-go, there are issues in terms of how we provided services to students, and so now we're undoing those. Last year, we opened Oakley Green, and we're on schedule to, for the next fall, to open Roseway Heights and Tubman as middle schools. That requires adjustments. And our second inequity, which is that our boundaries, we haven't had a, an ongoing program to adjust our boundaries to match school populations with the size of the facility. Going back to K5s and middle schools means we have to do boundary adjustments as well. And staff has put together a thoughtful proposal on how to do that for these two middle schools. Will likely have more work to do for several years, and especially in, it'll be three years hopefully when Kellogg gets opened, and that will help us complete that transition from K8s to K5s and middle schools. But we've, have a proposal out, we've had a lot of public input, and Harry Esteb is here to update us on what we've heard so far, and the process going forward in terms of future listening sessions and how, and our timeline for decisions. And Laura Parker is here as well to report in. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair Ben Edwards and Directors Moses. I'm going to give you an update on what's been going on with our community engagement. I'm happy to report that community engagement on the two middle school proposals is well underway, and I'm going to say again, for those of you who are either current or former DBRAC members, this has been going on for a while. But now we're back at it. You had a robust listening session last night, which is the second of two such sessions that you've had, and there is still a lot more to come, which I will detail in just a bit. And I'm also going to spend a little time giving you a breakdown on the kinds of responses that we've had from those two listening sessions, but also from some other sessions that we've had, and approximately 300 comments that have come in either online through our targeted email system or written comments that were given to us at the board, at the listening sessions. But first, I just want to talk for a few minutes on why we do this, just so everyone understands. Community engagement sessions are held for, I would say, two main reasons, there's probably others as well, but one is to inform the stakeholders what we're doing, so that they have the information base that they can, you know, react to. And then the second primary reason is to get the response that ultimately improves the proposal that we started with. And so that's why we're doing all this. And that's already happened in some of these sessions. We're starting to see comments that have come in that are affecting the proposal, and I'm sure that's going to continue. I want to give you just a little bit more background. The proposal to open these two middle schools at Harriet Tubman and Roseway Heights has been the subject of district conversation for, you know, certainly more than two years, maybe more than three years. And back in the spring of 2016, DBRAC, the Districtwide Boundary Advisory Committee, I forgot what they R stands for, Review, held a series of community engagement sessions on enrollment balancing in the Jefferson-Madison-Grant areas, and with the idea of opening those two middle schools in time for the 2017-18 school year. We know that didn't happen. At the time, DBRAC presented a 20-page memo to then-Superintendent Carol Smith on community response. So there was quite a bit of response to this idea of opening these two middle schools back then. But that work was put on hold by Interim Superintendent Bob McCain following the departure of Superintendent Smith. The work was restarted in 2017 with an emphasis on the middle grades framework, the idea that we want to start, you know, not just opening schools, but opening exemplary middle schools that would be a model for the rest of the district. And then the work on feeder patterns and boundaries was made a priority of the Office of Systems and Planning Performance. They devised an initial proposal for feeder patterns and boundaries that was vetted through Superintendent Direct Reports, through DBRAC, through a group of principals and senior directors. Significant changes were made after input from those groups, and that's resulted in the current proposal that you, that everybody has before them now. So once we felt that we had this well-thought-out and vetted proposal, we restarted the community engagement process. To date, we have had the following engagement sessions. PONO Leadership gave input regarding the placement of Vietnamese DLI. We had a meeting at...
Could you, I'm sorry, can you explain what that acronym is for those who aren't, who don't know?
You know, I've only heard it referred to as a PONO, but...
Asia-Pacific...
America.
I can...
Network of Oregon.
Network of Oregon.
That's one of those ones I can bring it back to you. If I do a quick Google check...
I'm going to ask you at some point to have a whole summary, so that we can capture that for the community of what all the feedback and listening sessions and groups that we've had, and we should just make sure that we...
Yes, and make sure that we spell out the acronyms.
Yeah, thank you.
Got it. Yes, I was going to mention that.
We'll memorialize this complete update in the formal memo to the board associated with this session.
In addition to that, we had a meeting with Roseway Heights area parents and principals to discuss K conversions, boundary changes, and other issues. We had a meeting with Supersac, the group that, the student group that advises the superintendent, to talk about the middle school experience and kind of the aspirations for the new middle schools. You've had the two board listening sessions, one at Madison High School and one here, to try to get different communities involved in the discussion. DBRAC had a work session last night to do a kind of fine-point look at the pros and challenges of the current proposal. We have minutes from that meeting that we'll supply to you. Had some interesting observations. And additionally, there's been testimony in front of the Enrollment and Forecasting Committee and before the board at regular meetings. In addition to the listening sessions, we have solicited community input online and through a targeted email account that I mentioned earlier, and to date, we have received nearly 200 comments online, 30 comments submitted on paper forms, and 10 emails to the targeted account. Those are in addition to the more than 70 people who have spoken to you during your listening sessions. I've read all the comments, almost all, this last batch I haven't quite gotten through from last night. And I've been to all the listening sessions, and so I'm going to just give you kind of the broad, a look at the major themes that I've seen come out of this. And when we present you with that document that you're looking for, I'll try to organize it in that fashion. But there, according to the, the comments that I've seen and heard, there's broad sentiment that the district is doing the right thing to open the two schools. Relocation of Kairos has prompted a lot of concern. Thus, the relocation of the access program needs to be reexamined. Vestal capture rate and current size is a concern. There are many who think that this proposal is courageous, and they ask you to stand firm against detractors to it. There is some confusion over sibling and grandfathering policies that I think could be probably straightened out with not too much difficulty. There is some sentiment among a group of families that Tubman is too far to go, including crossing several busy streets, for some families who would be redrawn out of the Beaumont area. There has been a number of statements that we should understand that students are resilient and can handle changes better than adults might think. Parents at Lee, Scott, and Vestal are, and MLK, Martin Luther King, are excited about the opportunity for their children to attend middle school, and I'm sure there's, those were the most common comments, but I'm sure that there's parents at other schools that are also excited to know that their students would be attending a middle school. There's some question about whether there'd be additional resources to ensure newly-formed, the newly-formed K5s that were K, are K8s now, would have robust staffing, depending on their size. There's some question about who goes to Madison versus who goes to Grant High School, and concerns around that. And then there's, there's a desire to keep the K4 students at Roseway Heights together as a cohort, but there's also kind of other side concern that keeping that cohort together isn't necessarily equitable. And then there's many, many other discussion points, but these were the ones that kind of leapt out at me as, as, as very common themes. So I want to let you know that the community engagement is continuing at a pretty rapid pace. We've got two community, community meetings, kind of large community meetings scheduled, one at Madison on October 2nd, and then for the Roseway Heights community, and one October 5 at Saban for the Tub community. To notify people about that, we've done our email, phone calls, and we'll do reminder phone calls, but we've also, and this is in response to some comments that we've heard, including tonight, we're mailing postcards to every resident in the affected area so that... Thank you. And that's a process that, it takes lead time, and it's also, you know, takes, it's somewhat expensive, but we're doing it, so that those should arrive any day, and they give explicit, and they're also translated in all five supported languages. And, you know, we do have interpreters at each session, and childcare and food. As part of those two meetings, we're, we're getting some outside help, some facilitating from Coraggio Group, which has worked with PPS before. They're going to help design these so that there's more than just kind of the standard stand-up and give your comments for two minutes, which, which we've had, but more, you know, potential for small groups, problem solving, talking about boundaries, but also about what we, you know, want to see in these schools, and, you know, what kind of students that we hope that they produce and so forth, so that there's some, we get some community engagement in that as well, get started on that. We're also planning culturally-specific meetings. We have one set for October 9th at Scott for Spanish-speaking families. We've got one scheduled for October 10 at Roseway Heights for Vietnamese-speaking families. There have been meetings with leaders of the African-American community already, but we're also trying to work on setting a date for African-American families to meet, and I think we're close to getting that done. Additionally, our planning principles have been working really hard. They've been scheduling their own meetings with PTAs, with site councils, feeder schools, SEI, Black Parent Initiative, and others to get their input on the plan. And so I think, even though it's been a tight timeframe, probably not what we would consider ideal for community input, we are getting a lot of it. And we will provide the board with summaries, as well as copies of all the comments we receive. We'll also highlight where community input has influenced the plan. I think Laura might be talking about that a bit, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, for a great overview. Questions?
Just a question on the format of the second and the fifth. So it sounds like it's going to be small group facilitation, so just to be, is it, there's no public comment period, so people should be prepared to come and participate in small group work sessions, or what should people be prepared for?
Okay, that's not completely, I think there still will be time for public comment as well. We're, we're meeting with our consultants the next day, actually, tomorrow, to, to start working on that design, that they're going to spend some time talking to, to people here about what would be the best way to do it, but there's just some thought that there should be more than just that sort of public comment aspect to it.
So I absolutely agree. I just want to make sure that people know sort of what the format will be, and I'm, one thing I'm concerned about is, so the most organized communities getting all the time slots? So I would hope that if there is public time period, we do it like the first listening session that was done, which sort of spread around to the different schools, instead of just hearing from one school community who was super organized, but hearing from across the schools. I hope we do it that, that way.
Yes, I agree, and I think that's...
It's in the works.
It's in the works, exactly.
I'd really encourage a bias towards the problem solving. I think that's much more productive use of our time right now. And, you know, we've had a lot of comments of, oh, this is pitting one school community against each other. Getting to, into a problem-solving mode, I think helps people recognize that it's a systemic issue, and that we have to recognize multiple viewpoints, and I think that's, I think that's much more helpful at this point than, and I said it last night at the public session, it's great to hear people say, no, don't do this, but recognize that if you say no over here, that, that has implications over there, and you have to take those into account as well.
I appreciate that, Director Bailey.
So two, two other things for your timeline. Probably should be noted that, I think, speaking for the board, we've all received probably hundreds of individual emails, so that's the other way that information's coming in. I also think if we're going to be memorializing the timeline, it's really important to start at the time period in which these inequities started, because I think there is, there are a number of people who are focusing on sort of the here and the now, and this is just a new problem, but this is, this has been a very significant equity issue for almost a decade, and I think that should be noted, because if we're asked to slow down, there's lots of people in this community who want us to go full speed ahead, because we've had, you know, a decade of kids go through schools without getting an equity experience. So I think that's important to note in our... So I think that's important to note in our, in the timeline.
Yeah, somebody totaled up the Jefferson Cluster kids who had gone through K8s, and it was a multitude.
It was 3,000, and that was in, that was 2016, was the back of the envelope calculation.
And what was that for?
That's the number of kids who went through K8s as opposed to a middle school experience.
Went through under-resourced.
Just in the Jefferson Cluster.
So that's not Madison, that's not the southeast area.
That's not only not having a robust core curriculum or a robust set of electives, but it's also, there were schools that the middle grade students actually were shorted two to three weeks of instructional time because they, their ending time ended at the same time that elementary schools. And I just think it's important that we recognize that that has happened, and that's what, one of the things we're working to correct. And for the, those who were on the receiving end of it, it was a long time coming for us to fix it.
Can I just add to that? For, for some of that, the last 11 years, some indeterminate number of students were denied access to even core curriculum. So it's not just electives, it's not just athletics, it's not just the fun stuff. This is serious, and I am hoping that the debate becomes more, more cognizant of the choices that are going to need to be made. There are no easy, easy solutions here, and we are pitting, okay, I'm not going to put it that way. This is very complicated, and it may, it may be satisfying to think that there are simple solutions out there, but there aren't. And every time we do something, there are consequences for somebody else. And the debate needs to, needs to acknowledge that.
Thank you for your, your passion and advocacy, Directors. I'd love to add a few more details about what we're doing with all of this feedback in terms of bolstering the proposal. So in terms of what the proposal includes, we've heard from many advocates to move forward with a proposal that is inclusive of boundary changes with balance, which balance enrollment in the resulting K5 feeders, while not overwhelming the size of the resulting middle schools. In terms of the application of grandfathering and sibling clauses, several of those implementation details were presented and discussed at the last Enrollment and Forecasting Committee meeting on the 18th for the purposes of determining some clarifications. Those year-by-year cohort-by-cohort details will be shared and posted as an appendix to the proposal within the week so that there's clarity. And that's a lot of nuances, but it, but it matters, right, to individual families. So we'll provide that clarity within a week as an appendix to the proposal, inclusive of the high school feeder pattern discussions that occurred. In terms of program location, as part of the implementation plan, the biggest call to action for alternative solutions is quite clearly around the future location of two choice programs operating inside PPS district lines. The Access Program, which is a PPS focus option choice program, which the proposal indicates would move to Humboldt.
Access is not a focus option program.
It is, it is an alternative ed program for tag-identified students, which, for those who meet the admissions criteria, have the choice of enrolling in or the choice of staying at their neighborhood school, so.
But it's not, it's not a focus option program.
Focus option is a term of ad.
I apologize for that, but, but thank you for, for making me clarify so that there's Both of these programs, excuse me, so the proposal indicates Access would move to Humboldt, and the Kairos Charter School is a public school choice program currently leasing the Humboldt facility. Both of these programs serve Portland families and PPS students. And while the primary objective of the proposal was to drive thoughtful planning for Tubman and Roseway Heights, identify feeder patterns, and convert eight K8s into K5s with necessary boundary changes that stabilize enrollment, identify capacity and utilization, the location of these two programs accessing Kairos has emerged as a question from almost every direction. So in the engagement process with both internal and external stakeholders, an extraordinary number of constituents have asked for an alternative that would not require Kairos to vacate the Humboldt facility. So at this juncture, we are actively pursuing ideas that have been brought forth from a number of stakeholders. Specifically, instead of Access being located at Humboldt, many stakeholders have asked to examine alternative solutions that would result in one of the following. One, a better understanding of what happens if Access remains at Rose City Park, yet still opening Roseway Heights. And the impact of this is significant on several neighborhood schools, but stakeholders have asked for clarity in those details. Two, a two-site location for Access with co-location of the elementary program and co-location of the middle schools program. Those are the two different types of ideas and, and solutions that many, many stakeholders have asked us to examine. So again, given all of that community feedback that's coming from every direction, those are ideas that we're actively examining and pursuing.
So both of those would have Kairos staying at Humboldt?
That is correct.
I want to ask about the, the co-location and, and over two sites, then does that allow, I think one of the issues for Access has been growth opportunities, so with, with the co-locating the two programs, like, would that allow for growth?
Great question, and so, that's one of the factors and desirable outcomes that has encouraged us to examine this step. So in looking at those options, we're hopeful that this would be a step in the right direction of being able to open up more tag services and more accessibility to tag services within, within a variety of locations. So yes.
Good. Thank you.
There have been a number of other suggestions that have been made by some of us and also some community members that I think we'd also like to explore. And we can talk about it offline if you want, but.
I'd like to hear.
Okay, well, one of them is, and I don't know about the viability of, of these things. I mean, we, some of us got together and did some back-of-the-envelope calculations, so, I mean, one possibility is co-locating Access and the Vietnamese DLI program at Rose City Park, and not opening Rose City Park as a neighborhood school.
So I think that falls into the bucket of a solution bucket number one, a better understanding of what happens if Access remains at Rose City Park. So there's a series of configurations around that option, such as the configuration you mentioned now.
Okay.
And what those numbers really are.
Another possibility would be expanding the boundary of the, the area that's under consideration. So expanding it south to look at, I mean, especially the, the issue of Vestal being under-enrolled. So.
Sorry, the boundary of what? Which boundary?
So the current plan is, is basically using the current Jefferson and Madison High School catchment areas. Some have suggested that, there are some real dilemmas in, in trying to resolve this issue using those existing boundaries. And is it possible by looking at expanding, going beyond the boundary of, the current boundary of Madison High School catchment area, that perhaps we could, we could make some adjustments, some boundary adjustments there? And I, I don't know, I don't know.
You're talking about it going into the Franklin?
It's actually still in the Madison area, but it would be south into the Harrison Park.
So it's not the Madison High School boundary, it's the?
The Rose, the Roseway Heights.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Sorry. Anyway. I'd like to see clarification, which we can do offline. I thought that at the last Enrollment and Forecasting Committee, it was asked that we explain the different scenarios that were examined for Vestal, inclusive of shifting the boundary south into Harrison Park, but we can revisit some of those details and additional ones if that doesn't meet your needs.
Yeah, I mean, one, one of the issues is that Vestal has a low capture rate, in large part due to focus option programs. It's not a boundary issue per se in terms of having too small a boundary. It's our current policy around focus option enrollment that is really the heart of the issue there, and that if we expanded the boundary and then changed that policy, we might have too many kids in that catchment area.
Yeah, there are 590 K5 students in the Vestal catchment today, 590. And I believe the capture rate will grow. I think there's stellar leadership, stellar staff, a wonderful school community, and Vestal is an amazing school.
And we need a policy change.
And a low capture rate that we will rectify.
So to be continued, what's our target date for bringing a proposal to enrollment and forecasting and to the board? And when we, our target date for approving a, the board approving a proposal?
So scheduled meetings are, there's a board meeting next week, obviously on the 3rd. There is a board work session on October 16th. Presumably, a final will be out before that board work session. Director Bailey, we have not yet scheduled an enrollment forecasting committee, so I yield the answer to that question to you. But I'm sure between the 3rd and the 16th, it will be scheduled for finalization with the hopes of the anticipated board vote on October 24th.
So one thing, I guess I'm just going to ask of the committee and staff, and, you know, great work, thank you so much. I think there will, anybody who hasn't thought about it will have had an opportunity, hopefully, to, to share it. If we're going to have initial, additional changes or refinements or anything related to the, a refinement on the sibling and grandfathering, that we really need to try and get those surfaced sooner rather than later in sort of a concrete form so that people have visibility to them before we get to that actual, actual vote. So if one of these options that you discussed, it would be great if we can get the data and make decision, or have a recommendation and make, make decisions so that the community has a chance to share it.
Yeah, thank you again for all your work. I know you guys have been working incredibly hard.
The next item on our agenda is Oregon School Boards Association nominee vote, and it's a little bit complicated, so.
You know the mic, Julie, and don't like.
Sorry. This is a little bit complicated. So there's nominations open for the School Boards Association Board of Directors and the legis, and several seats on the Legislative Policy Committee. So I'm going to ask for, first, for any nominations for the OSBA Board of Directors, position 17 or 18. And in this process, you're a nominee, and then there is a vote, I believe, by OSBA. But this would be, you'd be a nominee from this particular, one of these particular seats, and then the full OSBA membership gets to vote. So we, there's two seats, I'm looking at Roseanne, there's two seats, is that correct? And we have, in advance, we didn't hear of anybody who was interested in those two seats, although we did hear of interest with Legislative Policy Committee. So I'm going to ask, and this isn't, we're not required, but I'm going to ask if any board members have an interest in being a nominee to the OSBA Board of Directors.
I think we got plenty on our plate right now.
Just thought I'd ask. Okay, so hearing no interest, and I think just to Director Bailey's point, we do have a very full agenda at the district level. Again, I don't want to deny anybody else an opportunity for leadership. So now we get to the Legislative Policy Committee. There are two seats, and they are seats 18 and 19. And currently, Director Constam is in seat number 18, and she has indicated an interest in serving or being nominated for that seat again. And then in addition, we have, there's the other seat, which is 19. So I'm going to first ask if there are any, is there any interest from board members to participate, to be nominated for seat number 19 for the Legislative Policy Committee?
Yes, I'm interested.
And then for the seat number 18, Director Constam is interested. Is any other board member interested in that seat? Okay, so the way we do our OSBA voting is by voice vote. So first, I'm going to say, all those in favor of nominating Director Constam for the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, seat 18, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? We'll advance her nomination. All those in favor of nominating Director Moore to serve on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, seat 19, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? That nomination will be forwarded as well. Thank you, board members, and thank you, Roseanne, in advance for forwarding those Next, we have our, oh, I'm sorry. Well, you can, you could have voted, are you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay, so all, sorry, didn't separate it out because we, I guess we could do it all by voice, voice vote. So next, we have board committee and conference reports and the student representative report. So I know that Director Moore has a committee report, and I don't know, Moses, if you have a student rep report next week? Okay. And then anybody else after Rita?
Okay, so we had a finance audit and operations committee meeting just before the board meeting, and it was a very full agenda, again. And lots of detail to be had, but I'm going to cut to the chase on several of these things. The first item that the committee talked about was the final numbers on the state school fund and the revenue estimate. And because the state legislature ended up giving us, giving the state school fund more revenue than had originally been proposed, there has been a lot of speculation that it was going to produce something of a windfall, some unexpected money. Unfortunately, because we have some, because we made, how do I put this? Because the enrollment estimates that we made for last year and this year proved to be too optimistic, we have, we have seen a decrease in the number of students enrolled in the district, and because our budget is based on our projections of student enrollment,
budget is based on our projections of student enrollment, we actually have less revenue than we anticipated. And in addition to that, the state school fund is divvied up based on total state enrollment all over, across all school districts. So if some school districts in other parts of the state have a higher-than-expected enrollment, then that's going to negatively impact our share of the state school fund. Bottom line, no windfall. So we're not in deficit, or at least any more in deficit than we already anticipated, but the anticipated pile of cash isn't there.
So just a question, is, was there an actual decline, or was it a decline in increase?
It was an actual decline, I believe. Do you want to...
From last year? Sorry.
The question's a decline in enrollment?
Was it a decline from last year, was it, or is it just less than we thought it was going to be increasing?
Yeah, it's the latter. So it's increasing, it's increasing less than what we expected.
Okay, that's it. Okay, important.
Yeah, exactly. There's one more piece I'd like to add, Rita, I didn't, I didn't do a good job of emphasizing before, and a piece that, the adjustment as well, is how much we collect from a local tax point of view as well.
Right.
And Portland, generally speaking, you know, good for us, tends to do better than the rest of the state, generally speaking, so oftentimes, in the past couple of years, been, you know, better than anyone's expectation, that reduces our take as well.
Yes, it's the wonderful world of Measure Five.
That's right.
So there's an upside and a downside to everything, and it's mostly downside.
Yes, but Burns and Port Orford probably really appreciate it.
Yeah, okay. So the other, we got a briefing on level threat assessment, which is a new, a new safety process that we're going to be adopting. It's already in the budget, so it's already underway, and it's part of the budget amendment number one that we're going to be considering later tonight. And then the last thing we talked about was the, we went into some more weeds on new staffing models, and got a lot of great information, and hopefully, the staff are continuing to work on that, and you'll be getting updated kind of as things develop. Okay?
Is there any resolution or anything coming to the next board meeting from your committee?
We, well, we have a recommendation on the budget amendment, and we also have a recommendation on another item in the business agenda.
So those will be two items that will come to the board next week?
Tonight.
Oh, there's the one tonight, but the budget amendment will be coming next week?
The budget amendment is coming next week. Sorry. Okay, then I'll give you a preview. Yes, the committee, the committee unanimously recommended that the full board approve the first budget amendment.
Details to follow.
So we've already heard from the enrollment transfer committee, either of you two?
I could talk briefly. So the Teaching and Learning Committee met last week. We looked at, we had three agenda items. One was just clarifying the committee's mission and a work plan for the year. Then we had an overview of the middle school framework. So the middle school frame, reviewing the middle school work, rollout will be an agenda item for much of the year, as we're looking at kind of the five pillars of the foundations of that middle school plan. So last week was kind of the overview of the entire framework, and the next few months we'll be looking at each of the components of that. So this month, we'll be looking more specifically at the curriculum area, and with the goal, again, of, you know, what does the middle school plan, what is the district-wide middle school core look like? And so we'll do a deep dive into that. We also looked at the dual-language aspects of the middle schools and the feeder patterns there, had an overview of, also talking about the proposal for IB program at Tubman Middle School. There was a vigorous discussion about that, and that will continue to be discussed. I think the, just of the conversation was how we aligned, that we're ensuring that we're aligning middle school IB programs to high schools and aligned with elementary, so that, you know, we have, there's a reason for having the middle school program and the elementary programs. And I think the goal of, it's, one of the points of discussion was, you know, is it equitable if only some schools have that? And I think the issue is, we're really looking at starting the work on this and needing to examine if this is something that we can continue to roll out across the high school, high school clusters. And again, I think that there's a lot of benefits to IB programs, so that will be a continuing discussion in teaching and learning. And then the last piece was access. We looked at the new criteria for enrollment and access, and I think there were, kind of, that will also be a continuing discussion, looking at eligibility and kind of percentages of students that qualify. So I think those will be some consistent themes. Upcoming will be literacy adoption, the rollout of the elementary adoption, looking at that data, and continuing a look on focus option programs.
Thank you, Director Sparza-Brown and Director Rosen, with your committee meeting tomorrow, I'm sure next meeting you'll be on the list. Moses, at some point, I'd love to hear, it'd be great to hear more what the Super SAC thought about the middle school plan, so I don't know if that's something you want to discuss next week, but I think it would be great to get an overview of what the discussion was, so that we can sort of have student voice present through you at the board table.
Yeah, just real briefly, I sent everyone home with the middle school plan, the little packet, and I told them, hey, like, take this home and pick a few points that you want to discuss at the next meeting. So on October 3rd, which is our next meeting, we're going to take a brief moment to, like, collectively say, like, this is, like, what we thought about the middle school plan, and then I can quickly jot that up before the board meeting starts.
Great.
Thank you. Is there any other board business that anybody wants to raise?
I'm a little upset that we're five minutes ahead of time and not behind schedule at the board meeting. This is impressive.
Okay, well, don't speak too soon.
Yeah.
Now, now we have our business agenda, and in our business agenda, actually, there was a placeholder, and our general practice is, all resolutions or things that the board's going to vote on needs to be in the packet that is mailed out and is posted several days in advance. We did have an exception this week, that we're going to allow this one time, but to allow it, we are, again, this isn't a practice we're going to encourage, but we recognize there's a need to vote on it this evening, apparently. So I'm going to ask for a present, just a brief presentation. It looks fairly administrative and dry, but I think because it wasn't, hasn't been posted over the last several days, that if you could provide a brief overview of what's in Resolution 5516 before we have a discussion about the business agenda, that'd be appreciated.
Sure, yeah, yeah, and, yeah, I take ownership for having, bringing in late. We had the numbers done, the analysis done, and this was prepared at probably 90% level about a month ago, so it was that last 5% over the finish line, so I apologize. But it is, what we're bringing in front of you is what we expected. And briefly what this is, when we built the budget, we needed to put in an assumption for interest for our bonds. We assumed intentionally, we assumed a little bit high on the high end, because making a change for the amount that's going to be levied to bring that down is relatively straightforward. It's basically asking you to approve that new levy amount. In the event that our estimate would have been low, it's a much bigger effort, obviously, to notice that and to increase that levy. So what we're doing is truing up that interest placeholder that we put in the budget, and really, this is the form that we'll file with the, with the counties, that will levy the assessment for all the taxpayers for our bond payments. So we had put a placeholder in there of $124 million, 300,000. We're changing that to $121 million, 497,548. And we had asked for an extension, knowing that, you know, waiting until our bonds had sold. And now that's all done, we just need to, we need to ask you to approve this, and then we'll file this tomorrow.
Great. Do any board members have any questions about that?
I think I know the answer, but I'll ask the question. Is this going to have any impact on taxpayers?
Small, I would say not noticeable. If you, if we assume the assessed, the market value, or the assessed value for the property is consistent with what we assumed, it'd be relatively small, not really noticeable.
And if it's even present, it would be on the downside?
It'd be, it'd be reduced.
It would be less than anticipated?
Absolutely, yes. And we have a cap that was in the, in the language on how much we could assess per thousand, and we're under that cap.
And we got a deal on interest rates?
So, yeah, we, our sale went incredibly well, so our interest rate was just right around 3%, depending on which number you look at, and, which was better than a lot of the other bond sales that had gone on recently, and been better, as we mentioned, FAO, better than Lake Oswiggo's, and we actually have a, our bond rating is a little bit lower than Lake Oswiggo's, but we got a better rate. And good competition, we have probably five or six bidders for each one, each sale.
So, and in practice, what's that mean for our bond budget?
Well, so it means there are a couple of different things. It means, and generally speaking, that they're trading off the bond premium they pay upfront versus the rate, and we just, so our debt service cost will be less than it would have otherwise been. And it's competitive, competitive sale. And people love the Portland tax base, and they love the appreciation we've had here, and they love the fact that it passed by 66%. They love our catchment rates at PPS, so it's all, those are all things that were to PPS's advantage.
Glad somebody loves us.
Less money for debt service means more money for actual...
Well, so, because this money is levied directly to the taxpayers, there's no, there's no change in terms of our general fund, if that's the question you're asking.
It accrues to the taxpayer.
Yeah, it just goes directly to the taxpayer, yeah.
That's a win.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions? Nice job, and thank you for staying and providing the explanation.
Thanks for doing this under duress, thank you.
Board members, are there any other items, are there any items you'd like to pull for separate discussion and votes that's in the agenda? Ms. Hewson, are there any other changes to the board agenda? Do I have a motion, a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Director Bailey moves the agenda, and Director Rosen seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Hewson, is there any public comment?
There is none.
No public comment. Is there any board discussion on the business agenda? So the board will now vote on the business agenda, all in favor, including the student rep. Please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any absentions? The business agenda is approved by a vote of, I'm not sure, is Director Anthony still on the phone?
No, I voted yes.
Okay, I just wanted to check. Thank you for hanging with us. The business agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero, with student representative Tran voting yes. And a half an hour early, the meeting is adjourned.